All right, good evening everyone and Happy New Year. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January the 11th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. Clerk?
Thank you Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, January 13th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, January 15th at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meetings. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on a particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber or also up here at the turn-in desk, and provide them to our Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that Mayor, we will roll on to the roll call and I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite forward our Planning Commissioner who is with us this evening, Mr. Juan Fernandez, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, please join us and observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item?
Under Section 3, there are no closed-session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, with that one item being 4.1, the Youth Commission's Semiannual Update.
All right, I'd like to call forward our Youth Commission. Good evening.
My name is Carrie Monte, Management Analyst in the Public Works Department and ending my time as Advisor to Elk Grove Youth Commission. As this is my final Youth Commission presentation, I wanted to reflect a little, so I apologize if it gets a little more personal than normal and hopefully not emotional. It is definitely a bittersweet moment for me. It feels like these are my extra kids and every time they leave, it's like my kids are leaving the nest. Fun fact, through the nine years I've supported the Commission, I've had an extra 51 kids. The passion these students have for serving the city and their peers is amazing and what they've accomplished over the years really is remarkable. I really want to thank all of them for allowing me to share their Commission journey, to support and guide them. I feel grateful to have been given the opportunity to work with these youth for this long. I'd really like to thank the City Council for their support, not only to myself but to the Commission and to our City Manager's Office for encouraging me with this opportunity. As I move on to a new assignment, it's now my turn to leave the nest. I'd like to introduce Femi Omatiyo, our Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office, who is the new Advisor to the Youth Commission. Although Femi may be new as an Advisor, she's familiar with Commission activities as her daughter served on the Youth Commission a few years ago. I promised Femi I'd do the last presentation, so she has a past to that, but all of them coming are hers. So I'd now like to turn it over to the stars of the show, our Commissioners, who will now introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Cassie Parsons and I'm a junior at Pleasant Grove High School and this is my third year on the Commission and I'm currently the Chair.
Hi, my name is Ayla Bunyo. I'm a junior at Franklin High School and I'm Vice Chair of the Youth Commission.
Hello, my name is Ethan Lipsy. I am a senior at Casuna-Sokes High School. This is my first year on the Commission and I am the Secretary.
Hi, my name's Parok Tazeeb. I'm a senior at Elk Grove High. This is my first year at the Youth Commission and I'm the Communications Officer.
Hello, I'm Jayden Chen and this is my first year on the Youth Commission and I'm a junior at Casuna-Sokes High School. I'm a historian.
Good evening Councilmembers. My name is Ohm Shah and I am the Diversity and Inclusion Commission Youth Liaison.
What's up Council? My name's Garrett Winnick. I'm a second-year Youth Commissioner from Pleasant Grove High School.
Hi, my name is Haley Runner. This is my second year on the Youth Commission and I go to Bradshaw Christian High School. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Naud. I'm a sophomore at Pleasant Grove High School and this is my first year on the Commission.
Hi, I'm Pravam. I'm a sophomore at Franklin High School and this is my first year on the Commission.
On August 10th, we had our Youth Commissioner at the City Hall. We started off with introductions and icebreakers to get to know each other. The City Manager welcomed us and then the City Clerk gave us a training for the Brown Act. And then afterwards, we reviewed the Code of Ethics, roles and responsibilities and duties of a Commissioner and learned what being on the Commission is all about, including meeting dates, attendance, and involvement.
All right, our first major activity this year was our Fifth Annual Food Drive. This year, we collected, or we're going to collect four boxes from the Elk Grove Food Bank. We'll put them, one here at City Hall, at the Animal Shelter, and at District 56. On the 25th, we'll be out in the lobby and we'll be serving hot chocolate to everybody and hopefully some people will stop by and donate food.
Our main event of the year is Family Fun Day and we plan to have this on April 15th of 2023. This event will be hosted at the Old Town Plaza, just like last year and the years before. This is a free event and it's our fourth time doing this event. We plan to have carnival games, music, food trucks, and face painting. We hope to see you there.
In March, we'll have our Path to Positivity Event. This is an event we started last year.
It's free for people of all ages and its focus are on mental health. We hope to have expert speakers, food, music games, and vendor booths like last year.
This is a stargazing event that is currently in the works. We are currently working on setting up telescopes for a two-night event at the District 56 Great Lawn and we're hoping to have some docents come out and possibly point out some points of interest in the sky and this is one of our in-the-work processes, so we hope to get this on the calendar soon.
So, this is Party on the Palms. This is going to be our sixth time running, or helping run this event and it's planning on, we're planning on having it on May 13th, 2023. And we're going to have carnival games, game trucks, foam pits, food trucks, snacks, and live music, so it's going to be super fun.
My mistake, now it's me. We're planning on a Heritage Parade. We plan on doing this in co-op with the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Our possible location is the District 56 Avenue at the Arts. We plan on having this late April, but it all depends. This is going to be an event to celebrate heritage. We want, we were planning to have food, music, games, vendors, and we're going to have like a parade at the Avenue of the Arts Civic Center Drive Road. And, yeah.
So for outreach plan, we plan to post info on school newsletters throughout the district to inform them about like youth-related events and such. We also want to like create new content such as spotlights for some of the Commissioners so that people can get to know more about them. We also want to share important announcements like youth-related volunteer opportunities to people. And also, we plan to create a digital newsletter intended for the youth to also provide information.
And this concludes our presentation. I would like to give credit to Jayden Chen for his excellent work on the PowerPoint and thank you Mayor and Council for your continued support to the Youth Commission and we're available for any questions.
Let's give you a round of applause. It's so great to see these reports and having you all come before us. You all do great work and I'm just so inspired by so many of you. I've gotten to know a lot of you personally over the course of the last year or so, so thank you. This is where the civic engagement and public service starts, it's with all of you. So I'm just so proud to know that our future is bright with all of your leadership starting so young. Any of my colleagues? Yes?
Thank you Mayor. First, I want to start with Carrie. Carrie, I didn't know this was going to be your last one, so that's a shock to me, but I, you know, I know we're in good hands, Femi, and Femi will be great, but to you, Carrie, I just want to say you've put your heart and soul in this Commission and you mentioned 51 kids and you should really be proud of the program that you put forth and worked through each and every year. We're immensely grateful for your work and passion and dedication to this Youth Commission and so I'm sure we'll see around the city in other capacities, but thank you so much for your great work. And you, as for the Youth Commission, I'm really excited for this upcoming year, especially the stargazing event, that's really cool. You come up with some new ones all the time and from the mental health one as well and so it's just exciting to see this Commission continue to develop and all of you as leaders as well in our community and it's just an honor to have all of you out there in our community exuding all these great qualities and as a Commission and as you as individuals. So, thank you for all your work as well. And then finally, Femi, I can't wait to see you assume this role. Our kids grew up together, so I know you're a great parent and you'll be great to these kids going forward. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes. Vice Mayor Spies?
Okay, so what was the date on the Heritage Parade? I didn't catch that one.
We're thinking April.
April, okay, which is a perfect time because what I want to do is get you in contact with the Rotary Youth Exchange that happens. We get, our district gets about, I should say, our Rotary District gets about 15 youth from around the world and every year at our Rotary Convention, there is a parade of flags from them. And so it might be an interesting opportunity for them to connect with you, a good idea. And so then, the second thing is, is Ms. Bunyo, the second place we met was at the Teen Center Teen Idol Competition and it's coming back. It's coming back after three years, so there's going to be one, it's going to start up again pretty soon, so just know that. Be looking forward at the Teen Idol.
And she can sing.
And so Carrie, 51 kids, I'm just wondering, do you have to pay college tuition for all of them? Or, I mean, well, thank you very much, really appreciate everything that you've done for this program. And then Femi, I'm really, we haven't met yet, looking forward to meeting you and I'm looking forward to you carrying on the fantastic program that we've got here. So, thank you very much for coming here today.
Any others? Go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation. You guys are amazing. I might be out of a job in four years. That's how great you guys are. But just want to say thank you for being involved and thank you for being engaged. This is what we need. We need more young people involved in our community and this is what you guys are doing. I'm looking forward to attending some of your guys' events, especially at District 56, so thank you for that. And Carrie, thank you so much for what you've done, the lives that you impact before, you know, they're going to have that always in the back of their mind and when they go to college and when they come back home, it's going to be because you impacted them, so thank you for that.
And I want to thank, thank all of you for your work throughout the year because I was here when some of you, last July, were appointed to the Youth Commission and some of you have, we've been doing a lot of volunteer stuff at the Pumpkin Festival over the years, especially, and so I'm definitely, definitely excited at all the activities that you're going to be doing over the next few months, but I want to thank you for your involvement in the community. Very important to be involved and be engaged because that makes our community much more stronger. And Carrie, can't thank you enough for leading the Youth Commission over the years because that's a really fun, fun work to do because you get to work with young, with young people and you help shape and mold them into becoming really responsible individuals as adults and that's a really, that's a really, really important job and I want to thank you for that and I'm looking forward to seeing what Femi does in this role because I've seen you on and off in the building across the street, so I'm really looking forward to seeing what you're going to be doing with the Youth Commission. But I want to congratulate all of you for a job well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you and I'll conclude also, just additional remarks, welcome Femi in this new role. I'm sure you'll do a great job and really thank you, Carrie. As a former school board member, I know how attached we can be to our students and, but you will definitely have left that mark with all of them and while you're not in charge of their tuition, you know what, they're probably getting some good grants and scholarships because of your efforts. So in indirect way, you are playing a big role in their college career life, so thank you everyone and congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. All right, next up, we have public comment. We have two people signed up right now for non-agenda items. First up is our Planning Commissioner Juan Fernandez.
I picked a good City Council meeting to attend. I learned some, some good information for my four kids and a good feel-good evening. So, good evening, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone, members of the City Councils.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. My name is Juan Fernandez. I'm a homeowner in the Waterman Meadows neighborhood and for transparency, I am also a member of the Planning Commission as previously mentioned. I come before you this evening to bring your attention to a livability concern for myself, my children, and for a significant number of our fellow Elk Grove residents, I've learned. I'd like to request that the City Council review the City Noise Ordinance per Municipal Code 6.32.010B that states, quote, "Every person in the city is entitled to live in an environment free from excessive, unnecessary, or offensive noise levels," unquote. The Noise Ordinance goes on to state that, quote, "Ambient noise must be respected and noise greater than 55 decibels must not be audible at any hours inside a neighboring property," unquote. However, under the current nuisance animal noise definition, there is no decibel limit to a dog's barking, nor is barking prohibited during quiet hours defined as 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM in Municipal Code Section 6.32.090. Furthermore, the nuisance animal code does not define a maximum decibel level for barking dogs and a large German Shepherd's bark can exceed 70 decibels. Section 6.32.080 defines the maximum allowable noise during non-quiet hours at 55 decibels. Clearly, two large police canine-style German Shepherds, each barking at 3:00 AM at even 50 decibels, is in violation of the ambient noise clause and the limit of 45 decibels in the previously mentioned 6.32.080. Unfortunately, that is my exact scenario. And for reference, this is an actual recording of what 70 decibels sounds like at the fence line. Voice memos, where are you? I think you get the idea. I respectfully request that Council work with city staff and animal control to update the current nuisance animal noise definition to add quiet hours and decibel thresholds. I also request that Council consider the current nuisance definition that allows an animal to bark for nine minutes in any 30-minute period without being considered or defined as a nuisance. Imagine nine minutes of the previous recording not being defined at an offensive noise level at 3:00 AM when your kids are getting ready to go to school in the morning. Thank you for your consideration. I'm available to answer any questions you may have and yes, I have tried to speak to my neighbor.
Thank you. I certainly would be interested in looking into this. Any of my colleagues want to also?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could suggest maybe have staff get with Mr. Fernandez.
Work with Mr. Fernandez and we still want to get some idea of a direction to move forward, to at least have a conversation and so forth, so who would be the appropriate staff member, Mr. Bierman?
Madam Mayor, we can take, I'll have him speak with Assistant Chief Paul Solomon and we'll address it for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, thank you. All right, next up is, and I apologize if I say your name incorrectly, Bonita Harade? Harade?
I've been called words.
Oh, sorry.
It's Japanese and it's pronounced Hirade.
Oh, Hirade, okay, thank you.
Excuse me if I'm a little bit nervous, it's the first time I've ever addressed and brought this up. If I become emotional, I'm sorry. I'm addressing Prop 57. I am a victim. I was at a parole board hearing doing an impact statement on my violator, it was 37 years to life for attempted murder, kidnapping, rape, I mean, you, they told him at that time that he was not going to be eligible for a next parole hearing until, for five years because he was so disrespectful to the parole board. My daughter and I, my daughter just gave birth to my grandchild, got up and gave impact statements, putting ourselves on the line, believing in the system that they would keep him, like they said. Six months later, I get a letter stating he's being released, along with several hundred other prisoners. He's a Level 2 sex offender. This is all passed by Jerry Brown's Prop 57 that was misworded, tricky worded, saying that a nonviolent sex crime is somebody passed out and raped that's nonviolent. It's an awful proposition that was passed by us citizens and I understand, you know, I have a great respect for anybody that put the uniform on now. It's just an absolute sacrifice that I couldn't make. You know, I've worked with parole, I work with CDC, I worked in the prisons, I mean, I've done my part, you know, I've been on both sides of the law, but the last 30 years, I've been on the good side. So I know about stuff like this and his parole officer told me today. The last four times he's been released from San Quentin, he's come directly, taken his gate money, bought whiskey, got in a taxi, come to your house, did a home invasion. You guys have, the police department here has had to do actual extractions by knocking at my doors and my windows, throwing smoke bombs in my house to get this man out of my life. And I can't even go to my daughter's house when he's supposed to be released, September 21st, because I don't want to lead him to my granddaughter and my daughter if he's watching me. I know, like his parole officer said, he's going to come out here and kill me. He said he's going to cut off his ankle bracelet, he's not going to register as a sex offender and he's going to kill you. He's going to come to your house and he's going to try to kill you. So I suggest that you get together with your police department and find out what they're going to do, if they have anything in place. I understand that you guys are under great restrictions right now with the amount of personnel that you have and I mean, I don't blame them, I wouldn't be a police officer now. I mean, it's just absolutely dangerous and now all this.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
You know, and I'm sorry what you're going through. Can I have Chief Davis, please, connect with you? He'll meet with you right now and good luck. I'm very sorry.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to know what, if you, there was a plan in place for this mass release.
So our police chief will talk to you and then give us information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any other speaker signed up for public comment, so we will move on to our City Manager's Report, item number six.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Please bear with me, there are a number of items to report on. We've had a busy couple of weeks and the first thing I want to talk about a little bit is the storm response. Our community, our region, our state has been impacted by a lot of large storms, one after another and certainly, thank you, the city of Elk Grove was not, was not spared. We've been working closely with our partners, with the county, with the Casuna's Community Services District and other responders to, to address the rains and the high winds and all the associated damages associated with that storm. Just to put things in perspective, we had, our Public Works Department had 423 requests for service since the storms began. More than a third of these calls were in response to downed trees. Another third addressed localized flooding and the remainder addressed traffic signal outages, damaged light poles, and other hazardous events. Evacuation warnings and other orders were issued for parts of the city experienced flooding as a result of breached levees on the Casuna's River in Deer Creek. The city's proclamation of local emergency that we, the Council ratified tonight follows similar efforts by the state, the county, and the federal government for financial reimbursement and relief. There still is more work to be done, but the upcoming storms appear to be less than what we experienced over the last couple of weeks, which is great. There is still trees being removed, the Public Works Department have removed all the trees from the roadways. There are still very limited pockets of power outages within the city that smud is working very hard to address, but I really want to just thank our staff and our partners for the work that they've done over the last two weeks, a lot of late nights, weekends. The biggest part of the storms hit Saturday night on both the last two weekends, New Year's Eve and then this last week, so holiday time and people spending time away from, from families and out there in the inclement weather, just really great, great efforts and support for those that needed it most in our community and surrounding areas. So, Police Department, Public Works, and our partners really just did an amazing job and the public has really been great at responding, giving us a call, letting us know where the issues were and being patient as we've worked to try to address some of the issues that are out there, so, so now what? Right, as we continue to clean up in the community, there's a lot of individuals that have large trees in their property or debris and things like that, those, there's a couple of resources for people. So, through Republic Services, individuals can get free bulky waste pickup, so some of those larger limbs and green waste and stuff, you can call up Republic and they'll, and you can pile them in the front of your house and they can come and remove them. You can also order a second green waste container or more if you have that on an ongoing basis, if you have a large need there. You can also bring debris to our Special Waste Collection Center. There is some limitations on the space there, but there's some things there and you can also have it hauled off by private collectors or private haulers for that. And again, just continue, as we continue forward, just remind the public to be safe and call us when there are needs and we have people ready to respond, so. Let's see, so continuing on beyond the storm updates, we have a couple of things coming up that the citizens should be aware of. The new grant application cycle is opening this Friday, January 13th, for our Community Development Block Grants, our Community Service Grants, and our event sponsorship grants. Interested nonprofit organizations are invited to attend Technical Assistance Webinar that's going to be held next Tuesday, January 17th, from 12:30 to 2:30 to learn more about eligibility and the application process, ask any questions that they might have. Applications are also now being accepted through this Saturday, January 14th, for the Police Academies, the Police Department Citizens Academy. It's a free 10-week program that teaches residents the various aspects of policing. The academy meets on Tuesday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00. At the Police Department, classes will begin on January 24th and are available and details are available on the cities and police departments website. Restaurant Week. Restaurant Week is also coming, and starting this Friday, January 13th, with special discounts and deals on dine-in and carryout purchases through the Elk Grove Local Pass. A free mobile feature. For a complete list of participating restaurants ordered down the Elk Grove Local Pass, visit The community is invited to join Elk Grove Police Department and city staff at District 56 on Tuesday, January 17th, at 5:30 p.m., for the unveiling of a freeway sign and military banner dedicated to Officer Ty Linehan, who tragically lost his life in line of duty last year, January 21st. There'll be keynote speakers, light refreshments, and again, the unveiling of the freeway banner, which will be installed shortly after that, and also the military banner. There's also this patch that's going to be worn throughout the month of January by our officers in recognition and honor of him. So please, it's an open to the public, we encourage people to come. It's also being really coordinated by our cab, who really wanted to participate and be that, so they're the ones putting together the program and everything. So it'll be a great opportunity to gather and remember. You already heard tonight from our youth commissioners about the food drive coming up, and then that'll be the week of January 23rd to the 27th, so next council meeting in two weeks, you have an opportunity to bring some stuff, and have some hot chocolate, and do that, so please come and support our youth commissioners and the Elk Grove Food Bank, who the donations will benefit. Public comment period on the notice of preparation for the environmental impact report for the zoo project closes on Friday, January 13th. Comments may be submitted in writing to the Office of Strategic Planning and Innovation. Details can be found on the city's website. Just an update, I think we might have mentioned this before, I know we've had some publicity about it, but just the good news about the federal earmarks that the city received recently on Laguna Creek Interregional Trail System, and the Old Town Streetscape Project, $2 million each. We're going to continue to advance those projects through design, and then ultimately to construction. The Laguna Creek Interregional Trail System still has some grant funding that we're looking for, we still have a gap there to make up, but we're actively pursuing those opportunities, and hopefully we'll be successful, and ultimately bring that project to construction. And then finally, we have some events coming up honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. First, we have the MLK Vigil, which is being planned for this Saturday. Community is invited to attend that candlelight vigil in recognition and honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Saturday at Old Town Plaza, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Be an opportunity to network with others in attendance, hear from some guest speakers, remember the life and legacy of Dr. King, and enjoy refreshments. It is an outdoor event, so we're going to monitor the weather and make adjustments as needed, but as of now, it's on program for Saturday at 6:00 o'clock at Old Town Plaza. There's also the MLK March, and that is going to be on Monday, January 16th, at 8:00 a.m. at Sacramento City College. We're going to have city staff and partnering with the Kasunus CSD and community members from all over the region gathered to march. And again, we'll wait and see what the weather looks like, but as of now, it's moving forward. And then City Hall, of course, is closed also that day in recognition of that holiday. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you for that excellent update on all the things happening in our community. Any questions, comments from colleagues? Yes, Vice Mayor Spease?
So actually, I got a question and a comment. The first one has to do with timing of the opening of the Ty Linehan Highway. Could we please lean on Caltrans to clean up that freeway, at least for a day, so that we can have a clean freeway to dedicate? I don't want to pick on them, I don't want to, you know, I know it's difficult, but one day, can we have a clean freeway? Lean on them.
We'll make sure before the installation that we have a nice, clean freeway. Yeah, we don't have a date yet for the installation, a lot of it's weather-dependent, the ground obviously is really soggy right now, so it may be a little ways down the road, but we'll make sure that...
And I mean, if we have to, then we can talk to other groups that have been volunteering to help, but it's...
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, cool. And then the second one is, and I could hold it until later, but I think this is most appropriate when most of the staff is tuned in. There was a time when flooding in Elk Grove was a regular occurrence during the winter, right? And most folks probably don't remember it, so I won't try to, you know, take you down that long path, but I was reflecting on that the other day, and we were fortunate. I believe we were really, really fortunate. When we take a look at what happened in the areas and the cities around us, even cities who have been around longer than us, we, I mean, my own characterization is that there was very little, there was not significant impact to most residents. In the old days, that wasn't how it was, and that wasn't by, this change wasn't from luck. The city got beat up just as much as everybody else did, right? The weather just did what it did. But it's taken years of public works, working on drains and roads, right, to get us to a point where the infrastructure is in much better condition than some of the surrounding municipalities and districts. So I want to call that out. Police Department, Public Works, the Real-Time Information Center, which is of course part of PD, the communications team, and our partners at CSD Fire. Residents should feel really proud of the way that Elk Grove handled this emergency. We were hit just as hard as everybody else, and it's not all luck. So I just wanted to call that out. I apologize for taking it not in my comments time, I thought that was the most appropriate time to do it, and I want to say thank you very much to staff for really a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to continue with Vice Mayor Spease's, what he's doing right now. So yeah, I agree, we, it wasn't that long ago, there was flooding on the west side of town, in the intersections of the streets, and I just want to give a huge kudos to the Public Works, and city management, and the entire city team for, you know, taking care of the pumps and the local drainage. Things worked a lot better this go-around. But I just wanted to also say on a more grand scale, you know, Vice Mayor Spease alluded to it, emergencies, this city always comes together, and this was very much the same. And if the general public isn't aware, you know, during these emergencies, they're doing this all night long, while you might be home sleeping, and, you know, you just hear the rain going against the windows, but your staff, your city's staff is out there, you know, in the rain, in the Real-Time Information Center, in the Emergency Operations Center, coordinating calls, sending people out, getting things fixed, and so the dedication is very much appreciated, and just the amount of communication and coordination it takes for things like this. I have some personal experience with it, and so I tell you, a lot of things get confused, and just getting stories straight and getting the right resources there, it's very challenging and very stressful, too. And so I just want to emphasize what Vice Mayor Spease already started with, is just the appreciation and gratitude that we all have, the residents have, for the entire city team. And then I also want to recognize our very own mayor, who went to the evacuation center, as I said, the Sacramento Asian Sports Foundation served as a location, and even Wackford, I think, Mayor, you stopped in, so thank you for, you know, caring and popping in there to see the folks that needed to be evacuated, even though it wasn't necessarily Elk Grove residents, there were people, and there were people there in need, and we as a city came and helped and coordinated with the folks who did need help in Wilton and the surrounding area. So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, all in line with our vice mayor. I was saving this for the end, but why not do this now?
Sorry.
But I think it is the appropriate time, because it lends itself to the comments made by our city manager, that we have such a dynamic team, Public Works, our police department, our city staff, CSD and our firefighters, working in coordination with our other agencies, quite remarkable work. And I heard great feedback from the community as well. And, you know, I sat on probably three calls with CalOES, with different cities, city mayors, city managers throughout the state, just talking about the different efforts and the updates from every agency that was involved, and it is a big coordination when you have all of the agencies working together. And just stopping by the two evacuation centers, I could see the benefits of that coordination, because we have families that are suffering, and it doesn't matter whether they are our residents in the city or not. We're not only a compassionate city, but this is a regional approach, and the fact that we had two of the evacuation sites here in our city, it was nice to be able to stop by and see all of that coordination coming together in real time that benefited real families. So thank you to everyone, especially our staff, for all of your hard work through these very challenging times. We're not done yet, we still have more storms coming, but thank you, thank you, our community thanks you. All right.
Thank you. It means a lot to staff. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is our consent items. I will open up the public comment opportunity, and I see one person signed up for item number 7.9, Giovanni Odalini, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Giovanni Odalini. I've been an area carpenter since 1997. I'm currently a field rep for carpenters Local 46 in Sacramento, representing over 3,100 skilled carpenters and apprentices in Sacramento County, and hundreds of members right here in Elk Grove. There's no doubt we are in a housing crisis, we have more homeless than ever in our community, and affordable housing is scarce or nonexistent. However, our members have been having to drive farther and farther to find work that pays a livable wage, with health benefits for them and their families. I find it repugnant that developers are continually coming into our community and exploiting workers by paying them substandard wages with no healthcare. And then, they have the audacity to use terms such as sustainable, community, and affordable when describing their project, yet there is never any mention of the blue collar men and women that will bring these projects to life, and whether they will commit to hire members from the community, or if the benefits offered are sustainable for them and their families, and whether or not the wages paid make housing like this affordable for them. I'm kindly asking that the council please consider adopting labor standards, so that this and any future proposed developments provide area standard carpenter wages, healthcare coverage, and commit to hire local carpenters, including apprentices. Myself and tens of thousands of other members have benefited from a state-approved apprenticeship program, and our quality of life is better because of it. Apprenticeship programs give those without the opportunity to attend college the ability to acquire skills that lead to good-paying jobs, that are a proven escalator to the middle class and a shot at the American dream. With your leadership and direction, we can send a message to developers that Elk Grove and Sacramento County will no longer tolerate the exploitation of carpenters, skilled tradespeople and apprentices, so that they can maximize their profits on the backs of hard-working, blue-collar families, trying to survive in one of the most expensive states in the nation. We should be rewarding the developers and contractors that do the right thing, and pay area standard wages on their own. Adopting labor standards will level the playing field for the responsible developers and contractors, and it eliminates the advantage that the rapacious developers have. The result of these labor standards will greatly benefit blue-collar families of Elk Grove and Sacramento County, and produce a high-quality product for the end user. What is the city council going to do to ensure that the wages and healthcare of Elk Grove's skilled, blue-collar citizens are honored and protected? Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing those comments forward. I don't see anybody else signed up to speak on consent calendar items, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I will look for an approval for the consent calendar.
Move consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up, we have item 8.1.
That'll be a public hearing to consider resolution approving amendment number four to the community development block grant, CDBG 2019-20 action plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutter, Housing and Grant Specialist. I am here tonight to ask you to adopt an amendment to our community development block grant action plan related to our COVID funding. As a little bit of background, the city receives an annual community development block grant, or CDBG, funds through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. With community involvement, we prepare a five-year consolidated plan, consolidated plan, and an annual action plan, which detail the goals and priorities for that funding. With the passing of the CARES Act in 2020, we were allotted additional funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. It's also known as CDBGCV funding. This funding was allocated through the 2019-2020 action plan, and is limited to eligible activities related to the COVID-19 pandemic. When that funding was initially allocated to the city, we amended the consolidated plan and annual action plan to incorporate the city's COVID response goals of maintaining or increasing public services targeted to low-income households, and preventing and addressing homelessness. We have since awarded the majority of the funds to nonprofit partners to carry out those related activities. As the CDBGCV projects have started to close out, though, several did not fully expend or are not anticipated to expend their full allocation. Therefore, we would like to reallocate that funding to other projects that will serve our community. In order to do so, we need to submit a formal amendment to the 2019-2020 action plan to HUD. You have received a copy of that draft amendment in your packet tonight, which identifies the city's plan to reallocate 170,000 in these unspent funds. These funds will be used to provide temporary shelter assistance in the form of motel vouchers to Elk Grove residents experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness. We anticipate the majority of these funds will be used for those waiting for residency at the Gardens at Quail Run 2 project, which is anticipated to begin leasing sometime in March or April, hopefully, of this year. These Elk Grove residents are currently unhoused and living in their vehicles. The remaining funds would support Elk Grove residents experiencing homelessness who are waiting for transitional housing vacancies, have an urgent need, and/or are in need of weather respite. To date, the city has allocated 66,500 in CDBGCV funds, and 40,000 in American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds, for a total of 106,500 for motel vouchers. Our nonprofit partners have been reimbursed close to 71,000 of that funding for those, of that grant dollars, in addition to covering additional motel vouchers through other funding sources that they have. A few stats detailing what the city's grant funding have provided residents thus far. In 2020-2021, grant funding supported motel vouchers for 22 households for a total of 393 nights, the average length of stay being 18 nights, and we had five participating hotels. In 2022, motel vouchers were provided for 13 households for a total of 132 nights, with an average length of stay for 10 nights. We had three participating hotels in 2022. The majority of the hotel stays have been at the Extended Stay America in Elk Grove, which is a total of 447 of those nights. As part of the city's citizen participation process, the draft amendment was released for public review, and to date, we have not received any public comments. At the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, if the council approves the amendment, we will submit it to HUD and begin working with Elk Grove Heart to implement the program. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that excellent presentation. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing is now open, and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up for this item, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and declare the public hearing is now closed, and open it up for any council comments or questions. I am happy to see the stats in there, that is something that I had brought up with our city manager last week, to really get a better understanding of how many households, how many nights. One pending question that we discussed was, in some cases, some of the hotels won't accept someone because of past either vandalism, you know, theft, and some issues. Do you know what might happen to those individuals, and maybe how many there might even be?
I don't know the number, I'm sure Beck, she might know a little bit more, but I do know that Elk Grove Heart does have partnerships with several hotels, like I said, there are more than one that are participating, and they do have, working with our Elk Grove Navigator, are able to provide services and support to the... are able to provide services and support to those who are in the properties so that they are hopefully not damaging the properties.
Right.
But they do have other options in terms of that and working with their staff.
Great. Yeah, that, the statistics were great to see. Thank you. Any of my colleagues have questions?
No question. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No questions, but I am glad to see that we're able to put this money to good use. So with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Excellent. We have a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Thank you so much. We will move on to our next item, which is receive an update on city council priority projects.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Ash Kumar, Management Analyst with the Strategic Planning and Innovation Department. I'm here with a receiving file item for you that will provide updates regarding the city council's priority projects. So this comes from the city council retreat that was conducted in April of 2021 when the council adopted the mission, vision, goals, and the priority projects. We come to you every six months, and today's update covers the reporting period for July through December of 2022. The next comprehensive review of the mission, vision, goals, and priority projects will occur at the 2023 retreat, which is scheduled for March 10th of this year. And as a refresher, let's go through the mission, vision, and goals. So the mission statement is to provide exceptional services that enhance the quality of life for our residents and promote a thriving economy in an efficient and cost-effective manner. The vision statement is that Elk Grove prioritizes a superior quality of life for all that builds upon the community's diversity and heritage through safe, welcoming, and connected neighborhoods with a variety of residential, educational, and employment choices and amenities that create a sense of place. The goals here, we have four of them, and each one of them we have logos for. The first one is that it's a vibrant community and sustainable economy with diverse businesses and amenities. It's a safe and resilient community and that it's a high-performing and financially stable city government and a city with infrastructure that meets its current and future needs. The priority projects. So we have 30 projects that have been deemed as high priority. We will not be going through all 30 of them this evening. They are at various stages of completion, and we would like to highlight a few of them this evening. So the projects are, all 30 projects have been organized into five areas. These are civic communities, transportation, community development, community safety, and city operations. The first one we'd like to highlight is that we adopted the Active Transportation Fee Program, which was adopted by the city council on November 9th of 2022. And the new fee will be effective in the upcoming weeks. The Active Transportation Fee Program will provide fair share funding from new development towards more than $186 million in bicycle, trails, and pedestrian improvements planned for the community. Next we have, we continue to support efforts of the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission to extend the Amtrak, San Joaquin, and ACE train services to Elk Grove. The environmental impact report for the Elk Grove Station was approved in April 2022, and the project is moving into the final design phase. We also selected a development partner to advance the development of Project Elevate. At the August 10th meeting in 2022, the city council selected global real estate firm Heinz to help with this opportunity to elevate the level of retail, dining, and entertainment amenities in the city and create a dense urban project in the heart of the community. Discussions with Heinz regarding the site design and operation as well as the financing for the project are ongoing. Next, we would like to highlight the landlord incentive program, which was implemented to assist people experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove. And it has assisted a number of households that were either experiencing homelessness or were at the risk of experiencing it. Nine households were moved into affordable housing, and 26 households were moved into permanent housing. The construction of the Police Department Campus at 9362 Studio Court for relocation of property and evidence and forensics was nearly completed. The construction phase of this project began in March of 2022, and it is expected to be completed by the end of this month. So on the lower section, you are seeing some pictures of what it looks like more recently. And then we have Measure E throughout 2022. As you all know, the staff held extensive community outreach and engagement efforts with the community and also conducted two resident polling surveys to discuss a possible sales tax revenue measure and to see what the community needs and priorities were. All that work culminated with the passage of Measure E in November of 2022. And the next steps with Measure E include soliciting projects from the staff members, conducting community and outreach to refine the projects, creating Measure E Oversight Committee, and completing the necessary paperwork to implement Measure E in April of this year. And again, there are many other projects that are, that have already been completed and some that are in progress, which will take us longer. These are the three that we'd like to highlight for today. We have the White Lock Parkway Interchange the city initiated, the project approval, and the environmental phase in March of 2021. The completion of draft NEPA is anticipated to be by, done by the summer of 2025. So basically, the staff is continuing to work on the design and environmental study. We have the Elk Grove Boulevard Streetscape Phase 2. The construction is anticipated to occur in 2025. There were some delays caused due to right-of-way issues, but we are working on this. Then we have the Camera Road Urban Design Study. The draft general plan amendments were released in December of 2022, and the draft environmental impact report is being prepared with an anticipated release in spring of 2023. So those were our highlights for this evening. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you so much for that report, Ms. Kumar. Any questions or comments? I'll start to my right. Any questions, comments? Councilmember.
Ash, I want to thank you for providing us with this update. This was very good information. And looking at the projects that are, that are complete, obviously, those are years in the making, and really appreciate how those are being resolved. For the ones that are in progress, eagerly looking forward to seeing how that all works out because these are all in different stages, whether they're 35%, 60%, 85%. Definitely looking forward to seeing how those are, are going to be shaped up and looking forward to engaging however possible in each of these different areas. So thank you very much.
And what's great is we do have our upcoming council retreat where you'll actually get to help shape the next round of our goals and projects and so forth. So this binder will then now include your, your influences and your input. Any other questions, comments from colleagues? Are you good?
I'll just quickly say, great work. I mean, it's a nice reminder because everybody's running around busy, but to see it all compiled like this, it just makes you appreciate how much is going on again with all the staff and appreciate the progress that's being made thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely a major teamwork.
And so, you know, days and days and days go by, and it's, I'm glad to have the sixth month look back because you look back and you, oh, I forgot. Not that it's not important, but you, you don't, you kind of forget what happened. And so it's really nice to look at the six months. I do have a question, and maybe a council member soon can help me out with this, too. In terms of, and it might be too early to know, but the ACE train and its funding, where's that coming from? I guess my concern is relative to the shortfall in the state budget. And they were talking about, it's federal?
It's federal.
Okay. All right. I was just curious if that shortfall in the state budget, and they talked about drawing back on transportation funds, if that was going to have some effect relative to the train. So federal funding, perfect. Thanks.
That was easy. So this is no motion here. This is just receiving information. All right. Next up.
Just before we move too far, just because I saw some activity as well, whether we have any public comment, if it's in relation to 9.1?
On 9.1?
Mr. Fernandez? This item? Sorry, about priority projects.
And we have closed public comment on the item.
Okay.
I can reopen it as a courtesy. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we are now on to item 9.2.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. This item is finishing up some activities that were initiated back on December 14th of 2022, one of those being a advertisement for a vacancy on the planning commission, of which we've received eight applications, which are up for consideration for tonight for that one vacancy post. The other element of this staff report is just an update as the other action that we took back in December 14th was to touch base with all of our current standing committee and commission appointees, seeing their desire to continue to serve for the next two years. As a result of that contact that I made with folks, what ended up happening is we have a vacancy that will be on the Disability Advisory Committee, a vacancy on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and it's a vacancy for two positions, one a voting member and one a, the, it's our alternate members on the Historic Preservation Committee. Those recruitments are open. As we get applications, there are deadlines that are set, but as we, we're going to be looking to get a full set of applications to come in for your consideration, but we're going to target January 25th if we do get enough applications that come in. One item that comes up with the Historic Preservation Committee, it's one of our more unique committees in that it's a five-member board, but it also has two alternate positions. And so what happened as a result of the outreach is one of the voting member positions stepped down, one of the alternates stepped down. What had ended up happening is there's a current alternate member on the Historic Preservation Committee, Mr. Brian Van Lent. And so a consideration, and it could be tonight or it could be for when we do appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee, is to move that standing member who's been an alternate into the voting member position. So, but that's the update. We'll see what happens for January 25th, but otherwise, the floor tonight and the speakers. I believe mostly will be in regards to the planning commission appointment.
So are we even allowed to move forward on one of those committees with the alternate since it's not on the agenda?
The, it's a consideration. I think maybe a best step is as we go to those appointments for the Historic Preservation Committee was to have the thought in mind of an opportunity.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Very good. So at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity for item 9.2. And as a reminder to everyone signed up, we have three minutes per speaker. First up is Oscar Okon, followed by Bonnie Tam.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Oscar Okon, and I'm here tonight seeking the position that's been opened by vacancy. My family moved here a little bit over 20 years ago. I'm a proud combat veteran with an honorable discharge with the Army and the Marine Corps. And I'm a standing member with the American Legion Post 55 here at Elk Grove. In the 20 years plus that I lived here in Elk Grove, I've been on the board of the Elk Grove Chamber twice and the chairman of the board in 2018. And 2009 to 2012, on the board of the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber. 15 years ago, I founded and still chair the Elk Grove Regional Veterans Memorial here in town. It's at the Elk Grove Park, and I raised close to $400,000 to do that project. At this point, I'm the vice president of the foundation, which is the Consumers Legacy Foundation. It's a nonprofit for CSD. I'm a Rotarian at the Laguna Sunrise Rotary Club. And in 2008, I was the president of the Elk Grove Rotary Club. In 2010 and 2011, I served as the chairman of the board for the Consumers River College Foundation. And 2012, I brought to this council the idea of a sister city for Elk Grove. And then we became sister cities with Concepcion de Ataco and El Salvador. Since then, we have donated 210 homes for the needy and a garbage truck and three buses, among other things that we given for storms and stuff like that. Currently, I'm a senior consultant for the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Administration of Northern California. And it's kind of hard for me to talk about myself, but I wanted you to know the love and commitment I have for our community and why I think I could be a good planning commissioner for our city. Thank you for the consideration, and I would like to use the rest of my time for any questions that you may have.
No questions. Thank you. Did you want to use the remainder of your time or is that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up is Bonnie Tam, followed by Michael Hill.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Tam, and I'm one of the applicants for the open planning commission position. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the city council and Mayor St. Allen. So from seeing Elk Grove grow from the very first time I visited my in-laws in 2009 to becoming a resident myself and seeing what Elk Grove is today, I think we can all recognize the exciting growth and evolution of the city. And I know that all that change and development comes with an immense amount of hard work behind the scenes from visionary city leaders and passionate citizens who are invested in the growth of this community. As a local business owner with young children in the Elk Grove School District, our family has gotten so much from living and working here in Elk Grove. And as a result, I've been looking for opportunities to give back my time and experience to this community, and I felt compelled to apply after reading about the role online. I have an academic background in resource management and environmental science at UC Berkeley and professional experience overseeing large-scale regulatory projects with public and private entities that often dealt with planning issues. In addition, my husband and I have been landlords in the Bay Area for many years, and we're very familiar with building and planning impacts at the residential and commercial level. I do believe my experience and skills and perspective would be greatly beneficial as a member of the planning commission. And I thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to seeing the continued growth and success of Elk Grove.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you. Thank you again. Next up is Michael Hill, followed by Frank Mado.
All right. Good evening, distinguished members of the Elk Grove City Council, Mayor St. Allen, Vice Mayor Spies, councilmembers suing, and newly elected members, Robles and Brewer. My name is Michael Hill, and I am here today to be considered as a nominee for the vacant opening on the Elk Grove Planning Commission. I would like to first start with the work I've done around the community. As some of you may know, I've had the privilege and honor to work with former Elk Grove mayor and now Sacramento County Sheriff Jim Cooper during his time in the California State Legislature. There, I was able to garner firsthand experience on how to leader conducts themselves, ponders information, and makes decisive decisions. During my time there, I was also able to participate and conduct community outreach, engagement, and feedback on upcoming legislation. Also volunteered my time to aid former councilmember Stephanie Nguyen in her race for the state assembly. And during that time, I was knocking on doors selling Elk Grove, and I was able to hear from our community about perspectives on the ongoings in our city. There was also a lot of positive feedback, but also I was able to hear some valid concerns and appreciated my listening to what those were. I also was working with the Sacramento County during the election right here in the city council chambers. And many constituents just wanted to voice their lifelong status here in Elk Grove and also let me know about, again, the ongoing changes in our city. Many constituents love our city and also just know that things need to change and that when they do happen, they need to be considered appropriately. I feel like the next member of the planning commission needs to have this experience speaking with our residents and not to be afraid to go out of the way to garner their feedback from the community. And someone that also wants to ensure that everyone is bought into the fold. For myself, the major goals as a commissioner would be to ensure safe and sustainable infrastructure is being vetted thoroughly, and the only most holistic plans are approved and sent to this council. As a member of the upcoming generation, I think it's extremely important we make our presence known in local government and to ensure we have a seat at the table as well. And also, because of that, I am very passionate to ensure there is climate and environmental conscious ideals taken into consideration so that the place we call home is livable for the next 50 and 100 years. And as we've seen with the extreme weather in these last couple of weeks, heat waves we experienced in the summers, it's critically important that we have our eyes on the long-term future and how we can build accordingly to what Mother Nature is throwing our way. I do have the tenacity and drive to reinvigorate the planning commission and by encouraging that our community is increasingly engaged at our meetings. And even if that means I'm knocking on doors just to let people know that we have a meeting coming up, I can do it. I have no problem. And I have a strong conviction that our elected officials and appointed officials often get the consent and advice from our residents on a consistent basis to make the best decision at the local level. Lastly, the planning commission needs a voice from District 3. I've lived in District 3 for the last 15 years, literally growing up in the district and before then in District 1 on Little Rapids Way right there on Big Corn Boulevard. But I like to express my deep need for the next appointment on the planning commission must be from District 3 to ensure our part of town and Vice Mayor Spies's constituents have a seat at the table as he does at this council. I appreciate your time and consideration. I appreciate your time and consideration of my application and hope to garner your support and your nomination, Madam Mayor, for this appointment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for presentation. Next up is Frank Mada. And that is our last speaker on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I think I had an opportunity to congratulate the Mayor and Councilmember Brewer at the Dickens Fair for their elections. I hadn't had the opportunity yet to congratulate Mr. Robles on his successful election. And thinking of the Dickens Fair, I want to, on the behalf of the Old Town Foundation, I want to thank the city, the council particularly, and then the staff that helps us with so much. We couldn't do that without it. It's probably the most successful Dickens Fair that we had in attendance and, and commercial activity. So, it was, it was very much appreciated. I'm here tonight though to, on behalf of the nomination of Oscar Okon. He listed many of his positions, but that doesn't completely include though, and I'd had many I was going to mention if he did not, but it's the activity that goes on in those positions. Oscar has been very, very active in this. I was the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Chamber for six years. Could always count on Oscar for counsel and to help us with any number of items that would come up legislatively particularly. And he would go to the Capitol with us, visit with legislators, and so he was very active in that regard. And as we all know, that takes a little bit, sometimes those are tense circumstances and it takes judgment, restraint, which I sometimes have difficulty with myself. But he did, I wasn't aware that he was necessarily even considering, but apparently there was him, talked to him, some people talked to him about potentially applying. He came to visit me, I thought it was over the Veterans Memorial, but as it ended up, it was about this job. And what impressed me most at the end of that was that it was questions about how things operate. It was inquiring. It was probative of my experience. Lot of questions, lot about the responsibilities and how, how you're affecting lives and livelihoods every time. There's not a trivial vote on projects big or small that's not affecting a lot of people. And so, that impressed me. It took, I didn't realize the connection immediately, but what I did come to realize is that I think those are the qualities you want in a Plan Commissioner. Someone who's going to probe, someone who's going to question, someone who's going to inquire, they're going to inquire the staff, they're going to inquire the applicant, the citizens, proponents, opponents, and be available. And he certainly has been in his active civil life. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work on the Planning Commission, Mr. Fmada. Good to see you, Frank.
All right. So, that concludes our public comments on this item. First of all, I want to thank all of the applicants for applying. We have some amazing candidates, really, really dynamic candidates. Ms. Tam, you did an outstanding presentation, was very, very impressed with your credentials. Currently, we have two Planning Commissioners that are from District Two, which is your district. And when I started, you know, when I was first elected mayor, one of the things that I really wanted was more geographic diversity, geographic diversity so that the Planning Commissioners really are the eyes and ears in our respective districts throughout the community. So, with that, just know that I thought, you know, the world of your application, you had a fantastic presentation and I urge you to consider some of our other commissions that are going to be open, that are open, and look at those for consideration. But if planning is something you're very interested in, these meetings are open, we value your input, so please be involved in the process regardless. But I wanted to thank you personally for your application. So, that leaves that there's three applicants in District Three, which is really where I'm looking at to fill this vacancy and two of which you heard from this evening. You know, this is a, I believe in creating new opportunities for new leadership, but then you have someone that's applied that is so committed to our community. And Mr. Hill, you had a fantastic presentation as well and I've gotten to know you over the last year as well. And I wanted to thank you for not only applying, but doing your due diligence and reaching out to respective members as well. I talked to our Planning Commissioner Chair, George Murphy. There's only one applicant that really reached out to Planning Commissioners to get a better understanding of the job. And so, I know that Mr. Okon, you reached out to not only Mr. Murphy to get an understanding of what is it, you know, in terms of becoming a Planning Commissioner, what does the job entail outside of the description that we post online? There's a lot of work and I know Commissioner Fernandez can attest to that, there's a lot of work. It is a very, very important commission. And so, you reached out to two Planning Commissioners, a current one and a former one, and I really commend you for doing your homework to really look at, you know, is this something that you would be interested in? And your application, sir, stood out above all others and we had some great applicants, but someone that has lived here for over 20 years, a veteran involved with the Chamber and our Rotary, I'm impressed that, you know, you have time and an interest to even serving considering all of the wonderful work that you do. But I know that you're committed and when you take on a project or a role, you do that 110%. So, I would like to recommend for my council's consideration, Oscar Okon, longtime resident of District Three to fill the Planning Commission vacancy.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I haven't interrupted you. My apologies. I got to jump on this.
No, you go on, go for it.
All right. I'm ready to jump. Okay, as, as a resident of, or a representative, excuse me, of District Three, I will certainly second your nomination. If, I know Oscar very, very well. I've been witness to some, specifically some of the things that he's done through Rotary and the Chamber. Now, if, if I was on the fence, which I am clearly not on the fence, the, the opinion of Frank Mada, who has been a great friend and a mentor to me while I was on the Planning Commission and in life in general, I, I miss our, our little meetings in, in your, in your office, but you know, if I were on the fence, certainly the opinion of Frank Mada certainly pushes things far beyond. And so, definitely strongly in support of Oscar Okon. I would like, of course, to do an honorable mention from Mr. Michael Hill.
Yes.
He is a resident of District Three, a graduate of Monterey Trails High School. He's a graduate of ARC and he has done a lot of work interning with then Assembly Member Cooper. And so, I just wanted to give an honorable mention there. And so, again, for the third time, I will tell you that I second your motion.
And I agree on that honorable mention and I will like to also mention that Mr. Hill mentioned in his comments to me personally of his support for any of the candidates in District Three. And I thought that took a lot of class and that was just a wonderful, to see the importance for filling that spot. Councilmember Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll continue where you both left off in, in that I think Mr. Hill represents the very best of Elk Grove's youth and what we want to see our youth, all the work that we do here, we want to see things like that. And so, thank you for stepping up, Mr. Hill, and put your name in the hat and I know your day will come. I, we got a chance to interact when you worked with the Assembly Member Cooper, so we, we all know here your, your potential. So, thank you for being here. I also want to recognize Ms. Tam, as the Mayor mentioned, I really liked your application as well and I, but I do agree with the Mayor's words about having geographical representation, which brings me to Mr. Okon, who I have a great deal of respect for and admiration in the work that he's already done in the community. It was said by you, sir, and as well as echoed by a peer in the dais. Finally, I also want to just give also a nod to Mr. Mada, been involved in the community for, forever and also been a great mentor to me when, as soon as I, when I first got on this council, so really appreciated your friendship and, and counsel as well. So, I will gladly third what your recommendation, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
I know that Councilmember Brewer would like to speak as well.
Yes, I do. So, we have some really good candidates that were in the process, but to have Ms. Tam and Mr. Hill come forth tonight was, was very encouraging. It shows that there are a lot of people in this community that care about this community and care about stepping up and showcasing their leadership here in Elk Grove and is greatly, greatly to be appreciated. But when it comes to filling this, this role on the Planning Commission, we do need someone with experience, someone who has been involved in the community for, for many, many years and seeing the work that Oscar has done with the Veterans Memorial and Elk Grove Park and how that is continuing to evolve and build, it has been very commendable. And that's just touching the surface on what Oscar is doing in our community, not has done, is doing. Always on the move and always inquiring, always searching for the truth and always looking for clarity in doing what's right for Elk Grove. No matter where, what capacity Oscar has been in, he has displayed that. And so, I definitely, definitely very, very pleased that Oscar's put his hat in the ring and I'd be more than happy to support him in filling this role on, on the Planning Commission.
Yes, Councilmember Robles.
I just want to thank all the applicants for applying. It's not an easy thing to do, you know, you put yourself out there, but you guys did have it easy. I had 17 people who applied when I was in the Planning Commission, so you guys had it easy. But just want to thank each and every one of you because it does take time, it does take, you know, 42 just to even go out there and beyond. I also do want to say, I think I am the best mentee that Frank had, just letting you guys know, all right? Several times, you said a couple of times, but there was several times where I had talked.
I had more time with him. Thank you.
We have competition for Frank here.
No, but, but Councilmember Spies, you hit it right on, on the nail. You know, when, when it's Frank coming out for somebody in the community, it means a lot, you know? When I look at Frank, I look at honor, I look at integrity and just making sure that what's put forwards for the community and Oscar resembles all of that. Thank you for your commitment to our city, to our state and to our nation. Thank you for the sacrifices that you've done and I'm excited to see what you're going to be doing on the Planning Commission. I'm excited to see the work that you're going to be doing and I'm in full support.
All right. Do we need to do a vote? I think you got your affirmations here from the dais.
Sounds like approval from the City Council on the appointment of Oscar Okon.
And I believe if I'm not mistaken, I'm not wearing my glasses. Do we have another applicant in the audience? Mr. Walters, is that you back there? Maybe not. Okay. No? Okay. All right. If so, we wanted to thank you and recognize you as well for your application. But congratulations, Mr. Okon, you're hiding behind the screen from my end, so just a round of applause for you. Thank you. All right. So, then we will move on to our next item, which is our Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items. We'll start to my left with Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our Sacramento area sewer district meeting today and nothing, nothing to report at this time, but it was, it was nice to see not only Councilmember Robles there and you, Madam Mayor, but also our very own Supervisor.
Our Supervisor. Yes, yes, yes. I logged right off as soon as I saw that both of you were there since I'm the alternate.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard your name. Okay, got it.
Yes, you did hear my name mistakenly by their staff.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Spies?
Let's see. Well, since I did a lot of talking before, I won't do any more with the exception of letting folks know that tomorrow is the Sacramento Public Library as well as Sacramento Transportation.
Estuare.
Other than that, I think I've already talked long enough tonight.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Brewer.
As, as Councilmember Spies had mentioned, the Sacramento Public Library meeting tomorrow, definitely plan on being there for that. And also want to give a reminder for Saturday's kind of like vigil at Old Town Plaza as part of the beginning of the MLK Weekend celebrations. This is part of that leading into the Monday march. And so, I'm hoping that everyone will come out and participate. I know it's going to be rainy, but we're under a covered surface at the, at the Old Town Plaza, so definitely come out. We've got, it promises to be a good show and we have, and we're going to have some warm beverages to keep everybody nice and toasty.
Councilmember Robles?
As Councilmember Soon said, nothing to report, but I do just want to say again to the applicants who didn't, weren't selected, stay involved, stay engaged, make a difference in your respected districts, make a difference there, always bring comments and concerns to us. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the city staff, thank you to Public Works, thank you to law enforcement as well to the CSD. And I want to do a special shout out to military police in Okinawa. They came out and they were helping out and even the Army Corps of Engineers were out there too. So, thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you. I have no report, so I'm moving on to adjournment and tonight I'd like to adjourn in the memory of four people.
Yes, thank you. I was going to mention one, but go ahead.
So, we did lose unfortunately three people in the Wilton area during our flooding and our horrific storms, Stephen Sampson, Catherine Martinez, May Kang Lam. And then we also unfortunately lost one of our own from our Disability Advisory Committee member, Karen Grusenmeyer on December the 23rd. She was a very passionate advocate for the disabilities community. So, just send our condolences to our, to their families and may their blessing, may their memories be a blessing to everyone. Thank you, everyone. We will adjourn in their memory at 7:27.